We had a man, uh, witness, on his seat.
What happened? They went from the best team ever to having holes in the defense all over the place.
This is fun.
The song, "Base."
Hi, James.
He was sympathetic. Well, he was apparently, I don't know if that ever played. But you can't. Obviously, he has some.
All right. All right. Now.
What is that?
I don't know.
No, I was like, you know.
All right. Is it good?
All right, back and call the order. Our committee meeting this evening for Monday, March 5th, and we do have a presentation this evening. We're just gonna take a little bit out of order here. Mr. Paul LaFond, if you want to introduce folks, and John Paul Manning, also.
So, basically, this is a cutting-edge technology that Mr. LaFond has brought forward for the wastewater treatment plant that could significantly reduce costs of the wastewater treatment plant by turning sludge from the treatment plant into electricity.
It's a couple of glasses. Paralysis, you do have to use that in power for TV.
It is the paralysis system, and I have representatives from BioWaste Pyrolysis Solutions here for the short presentation. But in a summary, it's the backend of our treatment process. We dispose of sludge cake now via landfill, and they have a system that would convert that to energy, reduce our costs. So, I don't want to get too much into Sam Slobetsky's presentation, but I will turn it over to Sam, who met a few times, and it's a very good system and a lot of benefits to the city.
Sam. Yep, Sam, you gotta use the microphone as well, sir, if you don't mind.
Do they have the presentation ready?
Is there a presentation?
I have candles, so.
Candles, okay.
I didn't know how many people was, we're gonna be here tonight, so I just kinda kept saying, "No, no, it's pretty close to one for every night."
All right, very good. Yes, that's an animal, yeah.
Everybody have a?
Yeah.
Okay. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I'm here with Brian Osterhaus from, who's our working together, providing a lot of the engineering services for us for the wastewater plant. My name is Sam Slobetsky. And I'm involved with Forditex. I don't know how familiar everyone is with Forditex, but one of the founders of, 28 years ago came here from Southern Connecticut to, you know, help start that business. And so, I'm kind of like an entrepreneur at, and this technology is very interesting, and appreciate all of the work and effort. I've been, I think I first met with Andy Capola and Paul probably three years ago, and I met with the mayor maybe a year, a little over a year ago, in developing this proposal and, you know, going back and forth over the wastewater facility, because it's, it's ideal for the technology and it could bring great benefits to both the city and benefit to BioWaste Pyrolysis Solutions, which is a company that's dedicated to developing the technology in the wastewater area. But anyway, let me just give a quick overview on this. Anybody ever heard of pyrolysis?
I think I have at some time.
It's a different kind, sir. Spelled differently.
But as Paul was saying, you know, when you clean up the waste, the wastewater, you know, getting rid of the contaminants in the water and your process, you end up with sludge, which is organic material. And it's organic substance right now, and goes to landfill out in Rochester, very costly process. So, pyrolysis, basically, instead of bringing it to landfill, we'll have the equipment set up on the site there, and basically, the process of pyrolysis is basically heating things up without oxygen. So, we're basically decomposing the organics, the materials, and then breaking it into a synthetic gas, which gets cleaned up. And so, at the end of the day, we're able to recover a lot of the energy, hopefully produce some electricity, but mainly, actually, it's really to get rid of this, the sludge, which is basically disappears, turns into a residue, a sterile residue, which has a lot of beneficial, or can have beneficial purposes. So, at the end of the day, we should have a net energy footprint, a zero energy footprint. So, anyway, we've been working on this proposal for quite a while to understand how we could best integrate pyrolysis technology into the operations of the wastewater plant, and we've learned a lot. So, and then, you know, working with Paul and Andy, you know, basically, their proposal involved, you know, no operational risk for the city. So, right now, wastewater sludge goes to a hauler called Casella, who takes it to Rochester. We're working with Casella, they're one of our partners, and so, they, so basically, in addition to the city's sludge, we're gonna be maximizing the output of this equipment, and the city will get revenue from the sludge that we bring in from other communities to optimize the amount of capacity at the plant. So, basically, there will be this relationship with Casella, so it'll be a very smooth transition. There's no upfront cost to the city, no financial obligations to the city, so basically, if the equipment doesn't work, it's on us, 100%. So, and then, in terms of the savings benefits, there won't be any tipping fees for the sludge carrier, and then, the city will get a host fee for any sludge that's brought in from other communities to be processed at the plant, and there should be some energy savings. And so, we're providing a discount versus the electricity that's being procured from the national grid right now. One of the key tenants of arrangement is there'll be no odor impact, no environmental impact, so basically, if there's any issues with any kind of odor doing to the process, it's on us, and, you know, we shut down the operation, which obviously is the last thing we want to do. Process is sustainable, and we'll be recovering the energy that again is coming from the sludge. That'll keep the process under, and it won't be needing any outside energy for the process. This is truly, the demonstration plant on the technology is coming from South Africa. Right now, they're using it in, actually, an animal processing plant. So, it's never been used for sludge, per se, but, you know, we're, it's not too far a leap, and it's a very interesting project, because this is a huge problem for the country. So, basically, the demonstration plant, if it works here, you need one of these plants for about every 250,000 people. So, just in New York State alone, you know, we probably need a bunch of plants. And then, you know, the way we're set up, the regional office will be in Schenectady, working with the startup New York program, and will be over at the, what used to be the Electric City Innovation Center, suburban, suburban office. So, it gives us an opportunity to work together, and, you know, I mean, if everything works the way it's supposed to, it could be a very, you know, big opportunity, not only for DPS, but for the city, too. So, you know, again, no risk, you know, and a great opportunity to show, you know, the state and the country potentially, you know, what this technology can do and bring value, at least solve a big problem.
Brian want to say anything? Brian, you want to come say a few words to add, or?
No. Yeah, I mean, we just looked at it from a technology standpoint in terms of what the process is and basically where outside it would work, with truck turning movements, space allocations over at the wastewater treatment plant, the architectural plans as well. So, just trying to retrofit these out of those buildings there to house this equipment. And the site really works nicely from that aspect.
Mr. LaFond, you want to add anything?
No, again, the city has no financial risk. He, Sam's company is looking at converting the old compost facility, it's dormant now, reutilizing that structure. They're fully invested by them, and there's no cost to the city, tip fees, and we will get a host fee for any material that comes in, and then would reduce our actual tipping fee considerably, and it could, it would result in savings of, you know, considerable on our disposal cost. And the backend of their system, too, it does produce energy. There is a possibility to utilize that energy back then to the plant and further reduce our, our costs in the operation of the treatment.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Ray?
Do you have, I know you said considerable amount of savings. Do you have ballpark?
Uh, I heard disposal roughly around $250,000 a year.
So, we'd be saving that?
We'd be saving that, yep.
Ms. Karen, she doesn't?
Potential revenue generation timeframe, and do you have any projections on that?
Um, that's funny. No, I met with the mayor a year ago, this past February, you know, we had a great meeting. I thought that the, everything would be wrapped up in, in March of '17. But, no, no, I, consequently, depending on how quickly we can, we get your approval, and then there's a couple little agreements that we have to finalize. I mean, hopefully, we can finish this by the end of April. To basically fabricate the equipment, assemble it, commission it, would be about a year. So, we'd be come up in April of '19. So, we're looking at the next budget process for going into '19, where I would make my adjustments based on their, their schedule. But again, it's, it's a, I call it a put or pay. If their system goes down, they will be responsible with still moving our sludge. We currently have a contract with a vendor, haul our sludge away. If we do go through this process, if their system is down for maintenance or anything, the vendor that works with them will continue to move our sludge at the guaranteed rate still. So, again, there's no financial risk in the city.
Any other questions, Mr. Ray?
I think in the first year, it's harder to do some of these assumptions, where it's a demonstration project, we want it to work, but at the same time approaching it, where there might be bumps in the road, things aren't gonna go quite as fast as we like, some things here may work better than we assume. So, in that initial period, it's gonna be a learning curve for both of us, but it's an exciting application of this technology, and there's a lot of potential down the road. Approaching it with an open mind, and really appreciate Sam's patience and negotiations. We've been going back and forth again for well over a year, looking at this, making sure, addressing the city's concerns, concerns that he has, how do we deploy this in a manner that reflects well on the city, doesn't negatively impact the neighborhood of the operation that's in place, but also creates opportunities going forward, not only for Schenectady, but the deployment of this technology in other communities.
Mr. Ford, you'll start.
You said that there would be, I know it's a demonstration project, but a host fee from other communities. So, we already spoke with the other communities regarding this project and how, how you would get those host fees from them?
Some of that, we put fees in there, we take some, and we take some septic in now, so there's other things that's in the plant. So, we're not saying that we're gonna take huge amounts in there, but there's a formula for making sure we're utilizing the facility at its maximum operational efficiencies.
So, and follow up to that, where, Mr. LaFond said that we're already in a contract to someone to haul our sludge. How does that, does that affect that contract if we went into that? Are you still obligated to continue that?
No. No, actually, they're working with the contractor to haul our sludge. We do have a one-year contract to haul sludge, and we did that out every year. If that contractor, if we now bring our sludge back into this process, it'll be very minimal amount of sludge that's left. It's really not sludge, it's a dry sterile product, usually factored down by probably 10 tons. So, for 800 tons, if we typically dispose of, we will only have 10 tons of residual, and that contractor will take that away. And the contractor that is currently in line for us is willing to work with, with Sam, and, you know, continue to haul sludge, but it'll be a lot smaller amount. Our sludge right now would be about 9,000 tons a year to landfills up west in Western New York. That would be drastically reduced because their process would reduce all that and eat up that sludge into, you know, in the form of energy. So, if there is other sludge that's gonna come in, what that is, is there's a tip fee set out, just like we have with our, our transfer station, that if somebody was to bring in, you know, 10 tons of sludge from an outside community, we get a tip fee or a host fee for processing at our facility, above and beyond what we're saving on our disposal.
Very good, Mr. President.
Do we have any income from what we're taking in now?
Yes. First, let's, septic sludge.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a regular line in our, in our.
And what is that?
We took in about $400,000.
Okay, so, then we wouldn't be still getting the revenue from taking that?
Yes, that is a separate revenue.
So, regardless of whether it would go to this plant, it would still be our revenue?
That's.
Like people that pump septic tanks, they can end up, and so, this process is at the end of the wastewater treatment plant process, not affecting what comes in. It's a pulse, but we're just managing that flow coming in, so we have capacity to try and utilize it.
Okay, and then my other question is, obviously, it's a business, right? You move into a money-making stage at some point, and right now, it's a demonstration project for the city, but going forward, once you decide, okay, it works, everything's great, what, will there be costs associated to the city at that point, right? Like, or will we always stay in this mode?
And it'll be a long-term contract, which is well less than the tip fees that you're currently paying, which covers our costs. So, the.
And if we're good negotiating, we'll put a sliding scale, so. The more they get, the more we make.
I just want, just want to know what the long-term cost might be. So, the cost savings of $15 per ton, is that part of our tipping fees right now, or is that pretty much our?
No, our tipping fees are over $72.
Okay, so, we're already getting a negotiated rate, and, and that would be over a long-term contract, or?
Yeah. I mean, the, right now, the proposal is, we would be charging 55 instead of 72, so that's whatever 17 or less dollar savings. And again, based on historical numbers, I mean, I mean, no one's opening new landfill, so, I mean, I don't think there's landfill tipping fees ever gone down, so, but we'd lock in, you know, there's some inflation stuff.
Sure.
And that also applies to the, to the host fee also.
Yeah, and what is the initial length of the contract?
We don't, we're, we have approval to move forward.
Mr. Paul, Matt?
If we have any sort of objection, saying we can back out of this contract, any point, correct?
Correct. There'll be language in the contract if there is a problem, and we terminate.
And the other thing is, just thank you for the presentation, very cutting-edge technology. I know there's other similar technologies in a different manner, much more cutting-edge than what you have, and it works fabulous, and hopefully, we'll have a nice working relationship, because down the line, this could turn into a number of other streams, ideas, hopefully, we'll partner with and generate revenue for both parties.
We have the facility, right? That's sitting idle right now, there's no.
Yeah, compost facility is sitting dormant, so they, now, look at the mechanicals of the compost facility, can be utilized to accommodate their, their process, so, we're moving, supporting them a little piece of real estate, and they're supporting us on savings on our.
I did a whole question because of that. So, obviously, there's also significant investment in setting up the facility. So, if at some point the city decides that it's not working for us for some reason, do you stay in the facility? Are we leasing the facility separately than the services, or is it all one package? Do you take your ball and go? You know, and do you, do you break down your equipment and go set it up somewhere else?
Yeah, well, if it doesn't, if it doesn't work, then, you know, we're, we're out.
I just wondered if we have a separate lease for the services versus the real estate?
It's there now. It's there, we have the equipment in, these land, we have utilized buildings, it doesn't work, it's your obligation, if they want to take the equipment out, it's their cost, take it out, move to another site, put it in storage, move if you want. We're not getting a land lease or rent for a land. If this works, more partnership, then we see our savings on the disposal and, you know, on the host fee. Hopefully, as the business grows, we can be more of a benefit in a very long walk.
And just, if I might, just ultimately accommodate their equipment, do their, maybe do upgrades to that, certainly in 1987.
87?
Yeah.
So, very nice 1987.
So, so those remain with the city.
Yeah, I think some that the governor's office will certainly support as well, but their, their big investment with shared services, cities, towns, and villages, I think this is certainly what the governor and his people are looking to support down the road. And thank everybody for a further presentation.
Quick question. On that same thing with the building, who's responsible for the maintenance of this building? Anything else? Who's?
Well, the roof is still fairly new, but, you know, we would probably pass that cost on, because it's their system. We're just gonna give them the real estate, the building. He said he's already gone through the building engineer, it, buildings are very good. It's just a steel frame structure with a biodegradable skin. It's, you know, it's not an insulated building, it's not a heated building, so.
There's no real mechanical center?
Other than the compost equipment that's dormant now, it'll be their equipment that goes in, so, and they're well aware that this is the northeast, it's, you know, we can get cold weather here.
You know, he's from Florida, he stays up here. Well, you originally come up this way. That's how we got to Schenectady?
Yes.
Up in here, so. Again, listen, this is just a presentation, we're gonna certainly have to use the pun, we're gonna flush this out early. With more meetings, with more committee meetings. But again, just to give our, our folks here in the council just a little idea of what's working on and what's in the works, and again, the mayor and everybody else will be continuing to work on the contract with Mr. LaFond, and we'll certainly be having you back for some good follow-ups. So, it was good conversation, good thoughts, good ideas, and we look forward to working on it.
Anyone has any questions, like Paul or whoever, just feel free to reach out, I mean, contact information's on there. And again, thank you all very much for the consideration, and we're excited about it.
Yeah, very good. All right. Appreciate it. Thanks. All right. Karen, we'll start city development planning.
So, we're gonna open the city development and planning, and we're gonna take a few things out of order, just actually one, item number nine. I would want to bring this up first, and the reason for that is that Chairman of the Metroplex Board, Mr. Ray Gillen is here, and if we can indulge the committee, Mr. Gillen was.
Thank you. I'm a force substitute for David Hogan-Camp, who runs our land bank and works at Metroplex. He and his wife are home with their boy, so.
Yay.
Great news for David, the president of the county. James Black is here from BNI, James Norah, again, thank you.
We're working together, the land bank, Metroplex, and BNI, to continue the great momentum that we built up on Eastern Avenue, and we come forward tonight to ask for your help in approving the sale of the former St. Mary's School for the full praise value of $26,500. The school has been vacant for 30 years, it's in very poor condition, and we have a developer that is interested in using historic tax credits to restore the building as housing, and develop about 50 to 60 housing units there and across the street on where the print shop is and the funeral home is now, and the former Ross Furniture Store. So, we're kind of taking a page out of the, the model that we've used up on the Hillside View Project, the Hamilton Hill areas developments up there, to create the same kind of opportunity on Eastern Avenue, which is to build some new housing. The total investment is about $12 million, so it'll be a great jumpstart to our, continue our efforts to revitalize Eastern Avenue, I should say, jumpstart. So, the two buildings on the corner of University Place and Eastern, plus Ross, are already, we have site control, we have options and purchase agreements in place for those properties. The last piece of the puzzle is your support for approving the sale of the St. Mary's School, which is really in a tough shape, it's really a live building for the city, and it's vacant, and you'll clean up this building, restore it, save it, revitalize the structure, and bring some quality housing to, and some, some major investment to this portion of Eastern Avenue. And again, we thank the BNI for their help and the land bank, and we're very excited to continue the good work that's going on on Eastern Avenue. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Can I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Home leasing?
Yes.
It's Rochester-based?
Right, yep.
So, have you read the other word in the city?
No, it's gonna be, this is the first time, it's gonna be, they've done a lot of projects, very experienced developer.
Thank you.
Motion is second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, going back, back up to item number one, Hamilton Hill, two zoning amendment proposal to the planning commission. Oh, there you are.
You get the microphone as well?
Do you get the microphone?
There you go.
Hi, everyone. I am here to talk about the community builders who have completed several housing redevelopment projects throughout the country and locally here in Troy and Schenectady. We have Danica Huff and Janice from the community builders with us here tonight as well, and we are, they are going through the approval process, as you know, and we are here to discuss the zoning amendment, changing eight of the 12 parcels comprising the mid-rise apartment building from R2 to family residential to C4 downtown commercial. So, we're asking for a resolution referring this zoning amendment to the city planning commission for a recommendation. And again, this is part of the phase two of their project to redevelop 40 properties and provide 112,000 units in Hamilton Hill. So, that's pretty much it.
Is there any question?
Question?
Yes, I asked you this question at the time that you came to us about this, about rezoning, and the question remains the same, why is it going from commercial to, to, excuse me, residential to commercial since it's currently residential? So, why the change?
Part of, there's 12 parcels, four of the parcels are actually going for C4, and that's on the Albany Street side, and eight of the parcels are currently R2, and that's on the Germania side. And so, I think in looking at that site, we didn't want to limit the use to just residential, because they, the community builders usually include community services as part of mixed-use development, so we feel like because it's close to the commercial corridor, C4 is a more proper use for the site.
The current plans, aren't they all residential right now?
No, no, there's, there's the properties that front Albany are C4. Fortunately, no.
Yeah, but in your project, is everything considered? I know, it's not about the.
So, we have, well, we have residential use, and we have community service facility use, we have incorporated. apartment building from R2 to family residential to C4 downtown commercial. So we're asking for a resolution referring this zoning amendment to the City Planning Commission for a recommendation. And again, this is part of the phase two of their project to redevelop forty properties and provide one hundred and twelve housing units in Hamilton Hill. So that's pretty much it.
Is there any question? Question?
Yes, I asked you this question at the time that you came to us about this, about rezoning, and the question remains the same, why is it going from commercial to, to, excuse me, residential to commercial since it's currently residential? So why the change?
Part of, there's twelve parcels, four of the parcels are actually going for C4, and that's on the Albany Street side, and eight of the parcels are currently R2, and that's on the Germania side. And so I think in looking at that site, we didn't want to limit the use to just residential because they, the community builders usually include community services as part of mixed use development, so we feel like because it's close to the commercial corridor, C4 is a more proper use for the city.
The current plans, aren't they all residential right now?
No, no, there's, there's the properties that front Albany are C4s. Fortunately so.
Yeah, but in your project, is everything considered, I know, don't, it's not about the don't.
Well, we have residential use, and we have community service facility use, have incorporated into the residential pieces, we have community rooms, exercise facilities, we have additional office space for not only TCB but other nonprofits in the area.
Right, so it is kind of more of a mixed use, and we didn't want to limit it to just residential, and also considering four of those parcels being C4 already.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the second one is the Hamilton Hill zoning.
I make a motion to a public hearing.
Public hearing. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Sit behind me. Okay, moving on, item number three, the supplemental agreement, Mr. Wallace.
What's under the term of you is supplemental agreement to MJ Engineering for additional design services for the removal of the two pedestrian bridges over eight ninety. So if you recall, when we were going to preserve them, had a public hearing, decided the best option for the city was to remove them, we needed a little bit more money because it was kind of a significant scope change to go from a analysis of preserving them to removing them, took it to the CDTC, CDTC, our motion to remove the bridges and allocated additional funds, so this is the state agreement for the additional funds for design.
Okay, any questions? Can I have a motion?
A little bit.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Cozier, next on our list is our committee holiday schedule.
Yes, and I guess, Ms. President, we were talking about the December meeting, is that what we're referring this one to?
The December meeting is currently on Christmas Eve at seven p.m. I won't be there.
That was...
I will be with my family, where all of us should be.
For some reason, I have it down as December sixth. Was that changed?
We talked about changing it.
So I put it in ahead of myself. Okay, so we need to discuss that format here, whether or not, we do need that meeting on that Monday, the fourth of that week, or what does that charge us? There's something we, can we have a meeting? We have to have that meeting?
I know you proposed possibly not having that meeting, but we have no way of knowing whether we'll have important end of the year things.
Right, and that's why it was kind of...
I think it's really risky to take a cycle out of the end of the year.
To do any cleanups.
Maybe we should keep it on the twenty-sixth.
I want to just make a provisional meeting.
Do a provisional of the temporary date of December twenty-sixth, then, which we can have Wednesday? All right? All right, so we'll do that.
Follow cycle, so we're...
No, it doesn't, oh, that's the fifth month, that's the fifth Monday.
Oh.
So, so the following cycle would be the seventh, January seventh. So we're fine, yeah, that's why, so we're fine. It's just the one meeting that we have to have concerned.
Okay.
All right, so we'll tentatively reschedule that one for Wednesday, December twenty-sixth, as opposed to twenty-fourth.
Yep, that's good.
Are you disappointed, Mr. Ray?
We won't, we won't, we won't call you Scrooge, then.
Oh, 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 that's the only area, so.
All right, do we need to make a vote on this?
Do we need a vote on this?
We do.
Motion? And second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes. Okay, so next up is the ceremony resolution for Women's History Month, and Ms. Brazel, or Ms. Porterfield, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So March is Women's History Month, just want to do a ceremonial resolution for that.
Okay.
A little bit.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then for Sicum, Ms. Porterfield?
Yes, Sicum is celebrating the fiftieth anniversary on March twenty, I believe, is the date, and it's pretty, that was a golden anniversary, pretty significant, so I would like the city council to be able to give them a resolution for all the work that they've continually done in the city of Skidnixity.
Another motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I'd like to present a ceremonial resolution for St. Patrick's Day, we do this every year, great entertainment, and we do have a dancing, and it'd be nice to do it once again this year. Have a motion?
See you dancing.
No.
A little bit.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did I miss Sicum's fiftieth anniversary?
There you did.
So I missed out.
Okay. All right, and then a ceremonial resolution for the music in our schools, Mr. Cozier?
Yes, and March is through the National Association, is Music in Our Schools Month, so we're going to have, believe it or not, we're going to have two sets of entertainment, two folks for entertainment next Monday. So the Oneida Middle School Band will be here as well, with a few of their orchestra members, and some music teachers and students, and again, the importance of music in our schools with pending budget cuts and lack of funding for our schools, unfortunately, so there's the music and arts, that are two things that always get cut, and we just want to show the importance of music in our schools. This is a national event as well, so I'll move it.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the rest of the items on here are for executive sessions.
Will be recessed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the city development and planning is recessed.
Call to order the finance committee, the first item on the agenda, sewer rate fees and intermunicipal agreements with Mr. Fatt.
We probably have a party to set a fee for residential units that are constructed outside the city of Skidnixity for development, and will be any projects that are developed in Temville or Scotia, Niskuna, and we do have a credit system right now that we're working on with the New York State DDC in regards to some sewer fault, and our consent order was issued in two thousand fourteen. And we do have a bank of credits to use for flow, and these are projects that are not administrated in terms of flow for the city of Skidnixity with regards to tax base, they are projects outside the city, who would like to send a fee associated with those based on a residential unit. It's two hundred and fifty dollars per residential unit, and it was four hundred dollars for each commercial unit, correct?
Any questions?
More fees.
More fees.
I was looking at the revenue.
You're driving you. More than you. Thank you, Mr. Fatt.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's.
So it would be a call for a public hearing to amend the code, write it so the fee would be set by resolution, and after the public hearing, pass it all upon to your son.
Okay, so can I have a motion for a public hearing?
That's your call. You make a motion for a...
Public hearing.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the two thousand seventeen budget reallocation, the CSCE retroactive payment, Mr. Ferrari.
Mayor, Council President, Council, actually, we have three, three legislative requests, two of them deal with the two thousand seventeen retro payments that we made for our unions, the Ask Me Ten Thirty-Seven and the CSCE, which we, we did end up resolving in, having an agreement. So we're looking for the CSCE, for the CSCE, we're looking to increase the, our two thousand, to increase our two thousand seventeen adopted budget by the total, it'd be seventy-five thousand seven fifty-six, and of course, it's all coming from our fund ballots, and for the Ask Me Ten Thirty-Seven for two thousand seventeen, we're asking for a total of eighty-nine thousand nine twenty-nine retroactive payments. Now, the third one is actually an amendment, budget reallocation for two thousand eighteen because when we did settle the agreement, the budget had already been passed for two thousand eighteen, so this is an amendment to the budget to increase by, by the cost of, of the other percentages of salary and overtime and such.
So since we're talking about all three, I'll entertain questions from Mr. Ferrari for any of the three agreements, if there are any. Mr. Riggi?
I see it says city's intent to use the two thousand eighteen fund bounce from General Fund, one seventy-seven six, water fund, sewer fund. It's okay to reallocate money from the water and sewer fund for something other than water and sewer?
No, no, but those are, those are the, those are the people that work in water and sewer funds, so we're reallocating their fund balance.
So it's okay to do it?
Yes, yeah, because, because that's where you're getting paid.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then we'll do, the next one is the reallocation, or the two thousand eighteen reallocation. Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the last one would be the two thousand seventeen budget reallocation for Ten Thirty-Seven retroactive payment. Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrari. And the last item for consideration will be the New York State Retirement Workday, Mr. Cozier?
Again, that's just an item that is recorded by New York State, for those of us who are under retirement system, as elected officials, we have to turn a typical schedule that we follow, I think we did for Ms. Brazel a couple of years ago or last year, and so I think it's myself and Mr. Moosavarian that's going to make this piece of legislation, but again, it's recorded by New York State.
So can we have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Call to order Hilton Recreation, and we just have one item, Grill Park Trash Discussion, Mr. Riggi?
Yes, this has been kind of ongoing, if you remember, right in the fall, I thought your attention, the park can use after dark, would allow use, well after dark, I mean, it was dark with the video that was sent to me, and now the same person sent us pictures of some of the stuff that's been left behind there, it's obviously in direct, direct conflict with our park rules. We're not supposed to be drinking in the park, and all I see is cool in the boxes there, and on top of the litter that's been left there, so this is ongoing. It's kind of the same stuff that went on in Central Park, so we moved them to Route Park, but we're having the same problems, and there's residents around Route Park also, people that live on Hamper Street, and those side streets in that area. So the complaints are coming in, and this just isn't right for us to have this kind of activity in our park. It's, it's beyond playing cricket. Playing cricket's one thing, but this, this extracurricular activity that's going on there, we shouldn't be allowing it. Quite simple, we just shouldn't be allowing it. If they can't play by the rules, and I say they shouldn't be able to use the park, if that's what it is, is clearly they're not playing by the rules. And that naturally with the open drinking comes the public urination, everything else that follows, that all follows, and it's all the same complaints we heard when the league was operating out of Central Park. So we just moved, it looks like they just moved to a different region, that's all, so it's not solving the problem. So I think, Mr. Moosavarian, you had some ideas when you called me?
Well, we're proposing looking at the permits and to add some more restriction onto the permit, still in works, I have discussed it with the mayor and the rest of the team, it's just being drafted, and I will hopefully get it in the next week or so, and present it to the council, and first with the mayor and the legal, let's file it, before it's, to see how we can be able to strengthen this in terms of the permit, more restriction, and the usage of the field, and, you know, the timeframe, not to be there at eight and nine in the evening, cricket doesn't play at that time, so something needs to happen, and they need to, from the time they finish playing the cricket, they should start, you know, get out of the ground, say that, and avoid these type of problems. In terms of trash, we discussed last year about adding a fee, I think that all these people are comfortable in terms of this, this type of activity here, that garbage are left behind, and the city has a cleanup that we need to build up, and we discussed that last year, and I think we need to put more emphasis on it this year and to enforce it.
That's, that's a point, are we going to get the PD involved, and they're going to have to make some...
Well, that's what I wanted to put this together, and then ask the mayor, legal department, and get the others involved, because we just want to roll it out, and then we don't have the, the same resource to, to deal with these things, so we want to make sure we have that place for it. But that should be available in the next two weeks or so.
What I think would also make sense, I don't know if we do this already or not, Mr. Mayor, but when we have these permits filed for the use of fields, I think somehow that information should be relayed to the police department, that we have an event going on at Central Park, we have the cricket going on at whatever field, just so that PD knows and perhaps they can, you know, put it in their schedule to stop by and patrol, I just think that's important, these are so many different activities and programs going on in all the parks, and how do they keep track of that? I don't know if they already do that, Mr. Mayor, or not, but I just think it might be something.
Desk officers notified, Mr. Cozier, these permits and other ones, so that they are generally aware of it, most of them run without it, so when you have ones that deviate, it's an accepted course of conduct, so we have to have the follow-up.
Right. And they were talking about security vows, I guess you said, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, that was a little security vows, and that's what we talked about, if it was two hundred and fifty or...
It was more than that. It was like two thousand or something, for each permit, each, every, every time you...
For the season, you're talking season.
But upfront, that was what we discussed.
It's returnable, assuming that there was no cost.
A fee for whatever...
So that's particular for a specific, for a park.
Yeah, I think Mr. Moosavarian mentioned also, we can, which are going to work out, calls for service, if there's overexempt or calls for service, there are complaints about loud music, and lots of charging for that, let it come out of the...
I also think you were speaking about perhaps tightening up the number of times there's an issue of pulling the permits and not reissuing them as well, so that would...
Yeah, that's, that's something I would bring forward to the rest of the council is that if you're called for that specific park, or, or a Saturday or Sunday game, because they're pulling it individual permits, we have to look at that individual who is the organizer to say, okay, you have, you know, four calls for you to leave the park at eight o'clock in the night, we're going to have to pull the rest of the, you know, pull your permit, and you cannot play for the rest of the season. I know we have the same problem at Mount Pleasant, Grum also, I think we need to do something about it, it's, it's getting out of control, it's no secret, and we need to put a handle on it, and a referendum, it's unfortunate that we have to do this.
Is there more than one group playing at Grill Park right now?
No, there one that has a permit for Saturdays, and one has for Sundays.
So that's the answer, yes, two.
It's two, I thought you said one.
No, I said, is there more than one?
Yes, sorry. And there's one at Central Park, but, you know, knock on wood, we don't have complaints, and they've been doing pretty good there, for several years now, because after the park got pulled from them, they realized their mistake, and they tightened up there, and they're doing a good job there. It's just that we just have to contain these two fields, Mount Pleasant, Middle School, and Grill Park.
Well, I'm also equally concerned, not just about the trash, which was distressing at least, at the very least, but it's the glass, I mean, because the glass breaks and gets half buried in the sand or whatever, and we're running around and burying, I mean, it's just...
Just after that, this is one of the complaints, Mr. Howard has been talking to me several times, we're leaving the bottle, we're hanging with it, tractors are going near to the park, these are the problems we encounter, so we'll, we'll have to address this and hold them accountable. So in two weeks' time, in the next cycle, we should have some things, hopefully, yes. Any other business for him?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, a second.
All in favor?
I want to tell it to you.
Are you okay? Thank you. Call to order public safety, and we have one item, it's ceremonial resolution, National Night Out, Mr. Cozier?
Fred Darling Lee notified us at our Woodlawn Neighbor Association meeting last weekend, I know they ran a joint mayor's office, last year they entered into a awards or recognition with National Night Out throughout the United States, and the Woodlawn Partnership with the Woodlawn Park and the National Night Out last summer, they won the recognition from New York State, so it's a very big honor, so we're going to bring them in, and I believe you said you already have the information out of Mr. Lee, so we're going to bring the folks in again, just to recognize the group. Now, they're planning another one, of course, I don't know if they've selected a park, but I believe they're speaking... I believe they're speaking at the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association this week, this Thursday, I think it is. And I think they're talking about Central Park, if I believe Chief Clifford mentioned. So, but it's going to be bigger than that, or so, just a way to recognize those volunteers.
May I have a motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Any other business for public safety?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so I want to go into, motion to go into...
Make a motion going to executive session?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, executive session is...
Actually, we do need to call back to order the committee.
Reconvene.
Where's your LCV?
I'm coming, I got it.
All right, so I think that has to...
That has to leave. We're doing that.
Can I get a reason why again?
Every week we tell you the same. I'm going to have to write it down for you.
We...
Sorry, it's a party. Yes.
So what we do is we discuss properties that are being sold, and in that discussion, there are financial information on the people that are purchasing these properties that we need to discuss and consider it an executive session.
Oh.
Okay.
Negotiations. Negotiations, correct. All right, is the camera off? The camera's not off.
Close the door. Give them a couple of...
No, you're right.
You got to go.
Nothing.
My intern.
Your intern? He's got, he has to say.
Yeah, he takes work in all the offices.
And we know where he lives, so if he misses...
Okay.
You have to unplug the, you got to plug it, because it's, we're not shutting off.